Committee on Landmarks, Public Sightings and Dispositions. At this time, we would like everyone to silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid any interruptions. Please at no point approach today as chair ready to begin.
Good morning. Welcome to the meeting of the Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings and Dispositions. I am Councilmember Sandy Nurse and I will be today's acting chair of the Subcommittee. I'm joined today by my colleagues, councilmembers Brannon and Marte. We will be joined by Councilmember Feliz online. Before we begin with today's agenda, I will remind everyone that this meeting is being held in a hybrid format. For members of the public who wish to testify remotely, we ask that you first register online, and you may do so now by visiting www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up, and then sign into the Zoom and remain signed in until you have testified. For anyone here with us today in person and wishing to testify, if you have not already done so, please see one of our sergeants to fill out a speaker's card, and we will call your name at the appropriate time. For anyone wishing to submit written testimony on the items being heard today, we ask that you please send it via email to landyoutestimony@council.nyc.gov, and to please indicate the land use number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. On today's agenda, we will have a hearing on land use item number 130, Brooklyn Edison Building and Landmark Designation in Councilmember Wrestler's District in Brooklyn, pre-considered land use item designation of the Willoughby Hart Historic District and Councilmember Osay's District in Brooklyn. We will also hold several votes, which we will do soon as we get quorum. So we're gonna pause. Okay, we're gonna open up the first hearing. Now I open up a public hearing for a pre-considered land use item, the proposed designation by the Landmarks Preservation Commission of the Willoughby Hart Historic District and Councilmember Osay's District in Brooklyn. Appearing today on this proposal is Stephen Thompson, Landmarks Preservation Commission, Lisa Kursavage, Kursavage, okay, Kursavage, Landmarks Preservation Commission. Those wishing to testify remotely must register online, as we've already mentioned. Thank you. Oh, sorry. I'm gonna turn this over to council to administer the affirmation. Apologies.
Panelists, would you please raise your right hand and state your names for the record?
Is the red light need to come on?
Yes. Lisa Kursavage.
And?
Stephen Thompson.
And do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this Subcommittee, and in answer to all councilmember questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. You may begin. Can we get the slides up for the panelists?
Slides are loading. One second, please.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Wrestler has joined us.
The Zoom host cannot hear the panelists.
Give us one second. The slides are out of order in the way that they want to present. So we're gonna skip over to the public hearing for land use 130, the proposed designation by Landmarks Preservation Commission of the Brooklyn Edison Building and Councilmember Wrestler's District in Brooklyn as an historic landmark. Councilmember Wrestler, do you want to say a few words on your, on the project?
Thank you very much, Chair Nurse. The Edison Building, 345 Adams, is well-known to, I think probably certainly every member of the city council from Brooklyn, because that's where the Board of Elections is. We have a number of city agencies in there. It's a beautiful building, and, you know, downtown Brooklyn has been undergoing dramatic changes in recent decades, and it's important that we continue to recognize and celebrate the rich architectural history of some of the buildings that have made downtown Brooklyn great. I have been in close communication with the, you know, it's for my colleagues' benefit, this is an unusual, unusual ownership structure of the building, where the ground floor spaces, or the first two floors, I believe, were condo-ed out to a developer to make them for dynamic retail spaces, and DeCast, the city owns the remainder of the building. It's critically important to me that we preserve the beautiful architecture of this building, and I've been working with some of the civic associations in the area to advance this goal, while also ensuring that the retail spaces can be activated, and that we develop an effective plan with LPC, while this is under council review, to ensure that these retail spaces can be to the benefit of our community. So I have a number of questions, but happy to hear the presentation and go from there, and thank you for the chance to comment, Chair Nurse.
Thank you. I'll now turn it back to the panelists for your presentation.
Great. Good morning, Acting Chair Nurse and councilmembers. My name is Lisa Kursavage, and I'm the Executive Director of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify today on our recent designations. The Brooklyn Edison Building is a distinguished Renaissance Revival-style office building, designed by Mackenzie Voorhees and Gomelin for the Brooklyn Edison Company, and built between 1922 and 1926. Highly visible from Adams Street, Columbus Park, and Fulton Streets, the monumental building is a notable landmark in the civic and commercial center of downtown Brooklyn. Next slide. At the public hearing on June 4th, 2024, three people testified, including representatives of the Downtown Brooklyn Association Historic Districts Council, who spoke in favor of the designation. The owner of the commercial condominium unit did not oppose designation, but emphasized their concerns about the flexibility in making necessary changes to the commercial storefronts. And the commission also received two letters in support, including from Councilmember Wrestler and a representative of the Brooklyn Heights Association. The Brooklyn Edison Building is located at 345 Adams Street on the corner of Willoughby, Pearl, and Adams Street. Next slide. The Edison Electric Illuminating Company of Brooklyn was established in 1889 to provide electricity to the homes and businesses of Brooklyn. After a merger in 1919, the company was formally reorganized as the Brooklyn Edison Company. After the completion of the subway lines in the 1920s, growth and residential development increased the demand for additional electricity capacity in Brooklyn. To answer this demand, the Brooklyn Edison Company required a larger building as its headquarters, and commissioned one of the most prominent architectural offices of the era, era, Mackenzie Voorhees and Gomelin, to design it. Next slide. Located on the prominent corner of Willoughby and Pearl Streets, the Brooklyn Edison Building was designed and constructed in two phases. The first phase took place in 1922 to 23, and the building expanded northwards in 1926, doubling its footprint. Designed in the Renaissance Revival style, the building features a tripartite configuration with rusticated stone base, brick and stone middle section, and double-set back crown, responding to the requirements of the 1916 zoning law. It is richly ornamented with Renaissance Revival-style elements, particularly focused at the street level and its roofline. Next slide. Originally located on the southeast corner of its block during the construction of the Brooklyn Civic Center and the expansion of Adams Street in the 1950s, the western half of the block was removed and the urban setting changed. Following demolition of the adjacent buildings, the ground floors of the Brooklyn Edison Building's west facade became exposed. The building was adapted to the changing streetscape by moving its main entrance to Adams Street in the mid-1960s. In 2009, Commercial Owners Must Development LLC created retail spaces with new storefronts along Adams that interpreted and replicated historic features on Willoughby and Pearl Street with modern materials, activating the street frontage facing the Civic Center. LPC recognizes that these new storefronts are nonhistoric, which allows flexibility into the future. Next slide. Despite the change to the city grid around it and changes on the lower stories of the west facade, the building retains its historic form and character. Highly visible from many vantage points, it is monumentally and prominent, massing incorporating highly intact Renaissance Revival-style elements is further emphasized after the change in the urban fabric of downtown Brooklyn. Recently, a comprehensive restoration of the building facades was completed under the ownership of DeCast. The building continues to serve as an office building with commercial activities on its first and second floors. Next slide. And the Brooklyn Edison Company was central to the borough's electrification needs and stands as a testament to the transformative impact of technological advancements in electricity production and Brooklyn's urban development. The architecturally and historically significant buildings continues to provide a monumental backdrop to Brooklyn Civic Center with an elaborate design and setback massing that recall the time of construction. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. I would now like to recognize any colleagues if they have any questions. Okay, Councilmember Wrestler.
Thank you. Thanks so much. You know, it's in my lifetime that downtown Brooklyn has changed dramatically, and the presence of the Marriott, the retail spaces on Adams in this building were critical components of kind of the revitalization of, maybe that's not the perfect word, but were critical components of kind of a new era of development in downtown Brooklyn. And I just have a couple kind of related questions. The current owner of the kind of condo retail space, Must Development, removed the facade on the Adams Street side and created a replica to look like the Pearl and Willoughby side of the building. Could you confirm that LPC agrees that the Adams side of the building was the back of the historical building and does not intend to seek any changes or require future repairs that are consistent with the current design?
Yes. So it is true that the front of the building was on Pearl Street historically, and the urban renewal, as I said, did change the views of the building, so it exposed kind of the back. And, you know, as I said, the retail was a recreation. We recognize that in our, all of the three, the hearing and two public meetings to the councilmembers and in our designation report, so that is part of the record that allows for flexibility for those retail storefronts. Our commissioner, or our staff, met with the owner on site. We had a really helpful tour of the site. We talked about future regulation, the potential of master plans, and, and other ways to provide, you know, flexibility, but also timeliness in issuing permits for those retail, which we agree really activates that street.
That is helpful to hear, but just to, to ask the question plainly, recognizing that Adams was the back of the building, you're not intending, LPC is not intending any future repairs that are inconsistent with the current design?
Well, the, you know, the, the back of the building is a huge, it's a big building. And so, you know, it's the upper floors and the ground floor, and the way LPC regulates is, you know, we regulate the whole building, but we recognize for storefronts that there's often been alterations of the base, and that storefronts have special needs. So our rules allow for a lot, our staff, to issue permits that can be expedited, that can be fast, and we, so we recognize the needs of businesses and talk to the-
And I do want to get into the storefront-specific issues with you, but I do just want to try to make sure that we're saying the same thing. As a result of urban renewal, Adams kind of became the main entrance for the building as it opened up the Adams Street side and Columbus Park, et cetera. But you're not intending to require future repairs that are inconsistent with the current design with regard to kind of the historical nature of where the original entrance was or anything to that effect?
I'm not sure what you mean with inconsistent.
Well, I, you know, I think we're, you know, I'm certainly happy to see landmark designation that, you know, maintains the current design and structure broadly. I can get into the specifics on the retail spaces, but sometimes I worry that when we designate a building, we then look back to some picture from 1922 and say, we need to recreate that picture from 1922 and hold the building owner accountable for a redesign that's going to recreate a 1922 image. And I'm sure 1922 was a great year in Brooklyn, but, you know, it, it can feel random. And so I just want to make sure we're not requi, because the previous entrance of the building was on Pearl Street, not on Adams, we're not going back to some previous design from a different era that we're imposing on this building and saying, you're going to have to recreate this that's inconsistent with the current design. Does that make sense? Did I say that more plainly?
Well, LPC never mandates a certain design. You know, people come with the changes that they want to make to us. And in this case, because we so clearly documented the changes to this building in our designation report, and that's what the commission voted on, we recognize that those storefronts on Adams were not historic. We're very clear about that, and that allows for future flexibility for those storefronts. But we regulate every building the same. You know, we, we don't, it's, it's not a different set of regulations for each building we designate, but we never mandate that somebody has to do restorative work, and in this case-
Although I, if you were to-
We were very clear about the, the need for flexibility and that these building, these storefronts had been recreated.
I think that sometimes the staff review of exactly this banister, or exactly this window frame, or whatever the heck it is, it can feel like it's a mandate. You may not use that language, and that may not be the way that you think about it, but I think for an applicant going through a process, they may not feel like they have the latitude that, it sounds like you're describing in your answer. But I, I, I do, I digress. I, I, well, I don't really. I just wanted to clarify that point. It sounds like we're on the same page. I just want to dig down a little more on the storefront, so if that's okay. It's critical we kind of ensure that these stores are able to continue to operate effectively in these spaces, and when there's turnover, we're able, able to fill these spaces and have vibrant, dynamic, mixed-use commercial corridor here. And I think we just want to understand in the creation of kind of a master plan with the owner and with the business, you know, for the, for the storefronts, do you intend to set policies, are you kind of committed to setting policies around backlit signage, signage size requirements, oning and color requirements, so that those are certainties for businesses that are coming in and what they need to comply with to be able to, you know, understand kind of the approvals that are in place for them to be able to kind of set up their facade appropriately? And I think you've said this, but just want to kind of affirm, LPC is committed to working with Mus on a new storefront plan that addresses these issues and removes any uncertainty for future tenants.
Yeah, we, we've talked to the property owner, we met on site, and we talked about master plans, set examples of master plans, and, you know, the way those work is that it, it is an application from the property owner. It's not something that we can create, but it can either be approved by the staff if it meets our staff-level rules, which, you know, it sounded like most of the issues that the property owners are interested in could meet our staff-level rules. If they don't, then it would just be reviewed by our commission.
Okay.
And then it allows for staff approval-
So you're not able at this time to like make a commitment that it would be staff-level approval for something like this?
Not without seeing what the application is, no.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And do you think backlit signage, signage size requirements, oning and color requirements are the, are reasonable expectations to have incorporated into the master plan?
Those are things that are typically in a master plan, for sure.
Okay. Well, that's all helpful. I'm appreciative of your patience with me today and your patience in working with Mus. They've been very appreciative of your time and insight and expertise. I know you met with my staff as well, so thank you for that. I, I think this is a good project and a good designation and good for downtown Brooklyn. I just want to make sure that we have sensible policies in place to protect the commercial storefronts and make sure that we can continue to have those as vibrant spaces in our community. So thank you very much, and thank you for the time, Chair Nurse.
Thank you, Councilmember. Going to recognize Councilmember Oswald Feliz is joining us online. Councilmember Salam is here. Is there anyone else that has any questions regarding this? Okay, great. So we will, thank you for, thank you, panelists, and we will close this portion of the hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to testify?
No, there are not.
Okay, great. So we're gonna close this part. Thank you so much. Oh, that's right. You're doing two. Sorry. All right, so just one second. I want to see where we are in terms of members. Okay. So I now open the public hearing for pre-considered LU item, the proposed designation by Landmarks Preservation Commission of the Willoughby Hart Historic District and Councilmember Osay's District in Brooklyn. We already went over this a little bit, so I'm going to ask the panelists to begin.
And we just need the slides? Okay, next slide, please. Okay, good morning, Acting Chair Nurse and councilmembers. My name is Lisa Kursavage. I am the Executive Director of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify today. The Willoughby Hart Historic District, which was designated on June 25th, consists of two blocks of cohesive historic streetscapes with row houses built between, in the, between the early 1870s and 1890s, representing the early development of the Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood in the late 19th century. The Willoughby Hart Historic District is loc-, oh, next slide, please. The Willoughby Hart Historic District, which you can see with the red label, is located in the northwest corner of the Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood, in the vicinity of the Clinton Hill and Bedford-Stuyvesant Historic Districts. It was identified by LPC in various surveys over many years, and after having designated larger historic districts in the neighborhood, LPC re-studied the area and prioritized it for designation. In addition to our internal studies, LPC received a request for evaluation from two-block associations for a historic district encompassing the area that we had found to merit designation. Next slide. The district is bounded by Nor- Northrend Avenue to the east, Marcy Avenue to the west, Willoughby Avenue to the north, and Hart Street to the south. LPC held three owner information sessions in advance of calendaring and after. At each one, we provided an explanation of why the historic district is significant and answered questions about our review process for typical alterations, including rear yard extensions. We also offered and held many one-on-one meetings with individual property owners. We also responded to concerns about timing by postponing two public meetings. Throughout the designation process and at our public hearing on Tuesday, June 11th, the commission received written and verbal testimony from property owners, both in support and in opposition of the historic district. Elected official support included Councilmember Osay, State Senator Brisport, New York State Assembly Member Zinnerman. Organizations supported, supporting the district included Brooklyn Community Board III, the New York Landmarks Conservancy, Historic Districts Council, Safe Harlem Now, and others. I will note that the full reporting of the testimony is included in the historic district's designation report. Next slide. The Willoughby Hart Historic District was historically part of a community known as Cripple Bush, which developed in the mid-17th century along the historic Cripple Bush Road that connected the settlement of Bedford Corners to Newtown in Queens, and which we can see in this 1886 map. And the land immediately within the district was later a part of Henry Boreham's property. Development in this area started slowly in the 1870s with one group of houses on Willoughby that are mostly still intact. The rest of the row houses in the district were designed, constructed, and planned by a small group of builders, owners, and local, local Brooklyn architects, such as Tommy C. Greenland, Arthur Taylor, and Isaac Reynolds. As you can see here in the 1880 map in the center and the 1889, 1898 map on the left, by the mid-1880s, the blocks had been nearly fully developed, and by 1898, all of the buildings in the district were constructed, which you can see in pink. Next slide. The district is characterized by long, consistent rows of preserved row houses. Many of the early inhabitants of these houses were Jewish immigrants from Russia, many of whom were also local business owners. The homes were owner-occupied until the 1920s, when most were split between multiple families who rented space. By the mid-20th century, the African-American community grew here, as it did in the larger Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood, and in 1969, of the 250,000 people living in Bedford-Stuyvesant, 80% were black and 10% were Puerto Rican. Next slide. In the late, or in the 1960s, the Central Brooklyn Coordinating Council lobbied Senator Robert F. Kennedy to visit Bedford-Stuyvesant and worked with his staff to form the first federally-funded community development corporation in the country, the Bedford-Stuyvesant Development and Service Corporation, which focused on restoration largely carried out by local men learning skilled trades. Number 485 Willoughby Avenue and the five adjoining row houses were restored as part of this program. Next slide. Shown here is our analysis and, and the dates, the building dates and styles represented in the district. All the row houses were built during the last three decades of the 19th century during a time of transition from farmland to dense residential development. The most common architectural style is neo-grec, seen throughout the district and employed throughout- throughout the phases of development. Row houses featuring a combined, combination of Neo-Grec and Second Empire stylistic features are among the earliest buildings constructed, and a row of Romanesque Revival and Queen Anne Style houses on Hart Street among the latest. The consistency in age and style creates a distinctly cohesive streetscape. Next slide.
One moment. We're gonna, is it okay if we're gonna call for our vote?
Sure.
Just because we have members who are in other hearings? So we're just gonna pause on the public hearing piece. We will now vote to approve the designation of the following sites by Landmark Preservation Commission, LU number 129, the designation of the Temple Court, now the Beekman Hotel atrium in Councilmember Marte's District in Manhattan, LU number 108, the designation of the Hecshire Building, now the Crown Building in Councilmember Powers District in Manhattan, land use item number 131, the designation of Frederick Douglass Memorial Park in Councilmember Carr's District in Staten Island. Councilmember Marte, do you have anything you wanna say? Okay, great. Members of the subcommittee who have questions or remark about today's items, please let me know. I now call for a vote to approve LU 108, 129, and 131. Council, please call the roll.
Councilmember Brannan? Councilmember Feliz, who's online? I don't know if he's able to unmute. Councilmember Feliz, online? Are you able to give your vote? Okay, Councilmember Marte?
I vote aye.
Acting Chair Nurse?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Salam?
I vote aye.
Maybe we leave it open for one minute. So far, with a, a vote of four in favor, the items are approved. Do you wanna leave the vote open?
Okay, we'll leave it open, but we'll turn it back to you all. Sorry for the brief intermission. Can we get the slides again?
Okay. And here you can see examples of the Second Empire, Neo-Grec, and Romanesque Revival styles. Next slide. After calendaring, there was permitting activity at DOB that LPC monitored, including resurfacing rear and rooftop additions and facade repair. In voting to approve the district, the LPC commissioners were apprised of and considered those permits. Today, the district has good integrity overall with consistent historic streetscapes and minor alterations to some properties that do not detract from the strong historic architectural character, streetscape integrity, and sense of place consistent with similar historic districts. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. One second. And we do have one question. Wondering if the homeowners will still be able to make additions to the back of their homes after the historic district is designated?
Sure. Our, you know, rooftop and rear yard additions are very common applications at the Landmarks Commission, some of which can even be approved by staff, others that go to our commission. So some, if they follow the rules, even our staff can just approve them in an expedited fashion, but otherwise, you know, we have hearings most Tuesdays, and oftentimes rooftop and rear yard additions are on the agenda. So it's something that we very commonly see in row house districts such as this one.
Okay. Thank you for that. Are there any remote public participants who wish to testify, have not already done so?
There are no public. There's no members of the public ready to testify.
Okay. There being no other members of the public who wish to testify or members regarding the pre-considered LU item for the designation of the Willoughby-Hart Historic District, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you so much, panelists, and sorry for the disruption.
The final vote for the land use items 108, 129, and 131 is in the affirmative, four in the affirmative and zero extensions, no negative, and all items are referred to the full land use committee.
Thank you, council. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, subcommittee counsel, land use staff, and the sergeants-at-arms for your participation today. This meeting is hereby adjourned.